Order today is Monday, August 21st of 2023. We start with the invocation from the Gateway Church of the Nazarene.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you so much for this community. Lord, we thank you for the business owners and the businesses here. We pray that you would just help them to flourish. We pray, Father, for our first responders, that you would protect them and let them know that they are appreciated and needed. Father, we pray for our schools, the administration, the workers, the teachers, and the students. Would you be with them this week, especially as they begin a new chapter? And Father, I thank you for these men and women and for their dedication to serving others. Would you bless them? Your word says that we should pray for and submit to those in authority over us. So, Father, I pray that you would help us as citizens to do just that, and as we do, that you would make it easy for these men and women to lead. Would you just bless them? Would you be with them? Would you give them wisdom to make decisions? Would you give them peace as they do? Lord, would you just bless and undertake as they think about what is on the agenda? And would you just bring a sense of unity among them tonight as they lead? Again, we thank you for them. We thank you for this time, and we pray that it would be here in Oskaloosa as it is in heaven. And Father, we just pray that you would bless the wonderful people of this community because of the decisions made tonight. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Almond?
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
Callagury?
Here.
Comfort?
Here.
Dross?
Here.
Hermsen?
Here.
Ocean?
Here.
First item up tonight is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to speak before the mayor and city council, asked to keep statements brief, time limited to three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak? Name an address, please.
Jeff Rogers, 2640 Highway 63 South. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a longtime resident of Oskaloosa, 30-plus years, 40-plus year employee at Musco Lighting. My current role is President/CEO. And here tonight to talk a little bit about the project that we've already released, put a press release out on. You folks are going to be voting on it tonight about moving it forward. It's a really super exciting project for Musco. We're going to be adding, proposed addition is to add about 75,000 square feet. There will be renovation and additional workspace. Then we'll also be adding 13,000 of facilities, office space, which will be over on the other side of D. It's already under construction. Some of the other components are in the planning stages, and again, we hope things go well tonight and that we're able to move forward. The intent would be that heavy construction will start around the 5th of September when we put up, and again, there'll be some inconvenience with all this. We understand that. About two years of that, we're going to start the fencing, the heavy construction, rerouting traffic about the 5th of September in '23, and then we'll open it for release to our workers and public, Labor Day weekend of '25. So there'll be two years of some hassle, but when we're all done, we're going to have a tremendous facility in downtown Oskaloosa. This is a very important place for us, for our family members, for our teammates. We're about 700 strong here in Oskaloosa and intend to use this as our corporate headquarters. We'll bring most of our 1,700 worldwide employees back here through, for training, education, things of that nature. So again, we'll heck, we'll stick around for some questions later on, but we look forward to a really positive opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anyone else care to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next on, next thing we have up is a presentation from the executive director of the Mahaska County YMCA.
Stu, Tim, I submitted the communications, and so I just wanted to invite Barry Martin, our executive director of the Mahaska County YMCA, to speak on behalf of the YMCA, and I hope you give him your undivided attention, and here's Barry.
Thank you, Stuart.
Hello, how is everybody today?
Hi, Barry.
Well, I hope you're good. I feel like celebrating, and in honor of that, I brought you all a cupcake, but I didn't want to leave these folks out, so I brought some.
So we don't want to develop a reputation for having free food at the...
I know, I'm sure I'm breaking all kinds of rules here, but you know what? You got to celebrate those little victories, and this is a big victory. So I'm really pleased to be here. As Stuart said, my name is Barry Martin. I am the CEO of the Mahaska County YMCA. I've been here two months this week and loving life in Oskaloosa. I love the community. I love everything that I've seen so far. Couple more restaurants, few more houses, and this place will be paradise, all right? So I've got a little presentation here for you that we'll walk through a little bit. We'll tell you a little bit about what's going on at the Mahaska County YMCA. Alex? There we go. Of course, you know that the original plan was we were going to open this 80,000, 88,000 square foot facility all at the same time, and there have been a hiccup here or there, and so as a result, the Oskaloosa Early Learning Center was the first to open a couple of years ago. We've got that thing operating with partnerships with the Oski schools and with SEDA, the head start provider, and the YMCA filling up 21 rooms of preschool, everything from infants to four-year-old preschool there. And it's somewhere between 150, 170 kids taking preschool there. Now that said, our work isn't done even at the early learning level. There's still a great need for early learning in this community, and so as a community, I think there's room for more conversation about what's next when it comes to early learning. But we're not here today really to talk about early learning. We're here to talk about the Mahaska County YMCA rec side of the building. Alex? So this is a photo taken from up above in the wellness floor at 5:00 AM on August 1st, 2023, when we opened the doors to the new YMCA. And as you can tell, there was a line out the door to get in, and that was literally the first guy in right there, and the line stretched out the door and continued for the rest of the day. It was quite amazing. So here's what's going on in our YMCA at the moment. As you can see, we've got the, the new gymnasium is open, and we're doing everything from the clinics you see there on your left to men's noontime basketball up above there, and the kids are just all over that place during the day. One of our board members walked in, he says, "It's been a long time since I've seen this many kids running around the Y," and he was just so thrilled. He said it energized him. He's been a board member from day one. He's one of two who have been around through this whole process and was feeling a little bit tired, and he said, "This really boosts my spirits," and so we're really pleased about that. Alex? So upstairs, we've got the free weight room, which is just absolutely packed with equipment. People are coming up, and I will say, the open floor plan is giving me a little bit of a literal headache. Every time someone drops a weight, I feel like my office just shakes. We're in California. I'm doing earthquake time up there, so especially, you can't see them from here, but all the way in the back, we've got a couple of squat racks, and people are deadlifting and dropping those weights on the pads, and it's meant to be done that way, but the building rattles a little bit, and so we're enjoying that. So on the left, you see a body pump class. This is our most popular group exercise class. We have about a dozen classes a week, and eight of those are body pump. The goal is to get to somewhere around 50 classes a week as we bring on additional instructors and get them trained in the various classes. So we have Zumba, and we have body pump, we have some yoga, we have a ton of senior fitness. The Silver Sneakers program is busting at the seams, and we're going to be adding classes to that because they're getting so crowded in there. We want to spread them out a little bit so our great instructor Connie Clark can give them a little bit more attention. Then on the right, of course, you see a shot of our cardio area. That's only a fraction of the equipment that's there. There's 15 treadmills, and there's ellipticals, and stair climbers, and bikes. You name it, we've got it. And the racquetball. I got to tell you, I, funny little story, I was on my first phone interview, it was a Zoom call. I was in Atlanta, everybody was up here, there was about a half a dozen people on the call, and I expressed a little bit of shock that there were racquetball courts in the new building because most YMCA's these days are converting them to something else. Very few of them are actually putting them in. I said, "Wow, that's interesting. You've still got racquetball players?" They said, "Oh, yeah," and they really are beating down the walls to get into the new place, and sure enough, we did a soft opening the week before the opening, and that place was packed. That was one of the busiest places. We only did it for three hours, and that was one of the busiest places in the building. And so if you're not a racquetball player, you should join because there's a lot of people in that group you want to know. There's votes in that group. I just want to also point out that you guys were very thoughtful, those folks who worked with us on the planning of the building and putting a lot of community spaces in this building. We have three separate and well-equipped community meeting rooms, and so if folks have organizations that they're affiliated with and they need a place to meet, let us know. We've got high-tech equipment. We can close off rooms. One of the rooms is huge and has audiovisual at both ends, and when you shut the wall, it knows the wall's shut, and it splits up the audiovisual. It's really cool, really cool stuff. So if you need to do something, you need to train your staff. You need to just have a meeting with your church group. Come on out, that's what these rooms are for. We're here for the community, and we want you to be involved in that. Okay, so how'd it go? We opened up the Y on August 1st. Today's August 21st. Typically, you see there blue that 18 number. That's how many new units we sold between August 1st and August 31st of 2022. And then you can see the orange is how many new units we sold August 1st through today, 126. The community has responded to the new YMCA, which you guys have helped us to do, which you guys have pushed us to do, is being very well received by the community. You look here, in 2022, we brought on 51 new members. In 2023, we have already in three weeks brought on 268 new members for the YMCA. So what does that mean? That means our active number of units went from 843 a year ago to 937 at the moment. That's a huge increase in one month, let alone over time. The number of members has gone from 1,754 to 1,950, another big jump. And the total number of visits, this is what really the metric that I keep yelling about with anyone who'll listen. Last year at this time, through August 21st of 2022, we had 2,381 visits to our YMCA. This month, for the first three weeks of the month, we've had 4,096 visits. That's more visits than any other full month over the last year, and so we expect another 300 to 400 visits this week, which, so by the end of, by the end of August, we should see that number closer to 5,000. That's an amazing response from the community to the new YMCA. So I'm very proud of that response, and you guys can be as well. So some other announcements or some other points I'd like to make. As we know, the aquatic center at the new YMCA is not ready yet, and this, this body is working very hard on that topic. I meet with members of my team and members of your team meet weekly on the issues around construction, and I know how hard you're working, and we appreciate that. In the meantime, we continue to operate Third Street as an aquatic center. The rest of the building is closed off to members, although we are working with additional partners. Oski schools is going to be doing their homeschooling there. We're looking at some veterans groups. We're talking to some other folks about how we can best utilize that building in the meantime. We know it's going to be open for, let's say conservatively, another year working aquatics, and so we need to put some other folks in there. So again, if you've got other organizations you work with and they're looking for space, let us know. We've got some space that may work for you. We want to be a part of that community and help anyone else. The community's been there for us, and we want to return that favor. So Third Street has room if you need it. The ribbon cutting. So our goal was to get the place open, get our sea legs a little bit, make sure we knew how to operate the place before we worried too much about the pomp and circumstance, but we're ready for a little bit of celebration. Enjoy your cupcakes, but on Sunday, we're going to have you in again over at the Y, and we're going to do the official ribbon cutting. We're going to hear speeches from, from the mayor, from the Board of Education Chair, and from the YMCA's board president as well. We'll have bounce houses and food trucks and an open house for the community. Anyone in the community, regardless of their membership, can come out and shoot some hoops, bounce on the bounce houses, kids only, and we'll go from there. But there will be activities. It'll be a little mini festival for you if you want to come out at 1:00 and see us with the big ribbons and the big scissors. No joiner fee through August, so you can save up to $50 on a new membership. So anyone out there listening in, are we live streaming anywhere? Hello? Anyone that's in the audience? You haven't joined yet? Looking at you. Come on out and join. So with that, I would just like to wrap up by thanking everyone who needs thanking. And this is, you know, I described my tenure, I've been here all of about two months now, and there were a lot of people out there with their shoulder to a big old boulder pushing it uphill for a lot of years. It's been a lot of effort by a lot of people, and I walk in, and they're all like, "Hey, you got the Y open." And I'm like, "Yeah, you guys pushed the boulder up the hill," and I went ping and let it roll down. So don't thank me. We need to thank you for everything you've done. To the mayor and city council, you know, your leadership, your persistence, your commitment to this project, everybody has seen it, everybody feels it. We are so very grateful to you for what you've done. The city staff team led by them all, Stuart's come on like me, and we're the two pushing on the boulder over the hill. But Amy and Alex have been there at all of these meetings. Bob's been there at the meetings. We've had just, I just cannot tell you how professional and kind and full of grace everybody has been with me. As I drink from the fire hose to try and figure out what it is the heck we need to do next, I've just, I just wanted to tell you how appreciative I am of you folks. Council, you've got a fantastic administration, and I think you can be proud of them. The general public for sticking with us. We lost a few memberships over the course of this, but we never dipped down below where we were two years ago when this was announced. They stuck it out, they've been with us, and as you saw from the stats earlier, they've come back with a vengeance, and they are there every day, and they're working hard for the community. I'd like to thank the business community. Mr. Rogers over here has been, his company's been amazing, you know, Musco, Cloud, Cargill, I could go on and on and on. There are dozens of corporations who supported this effort. There are hundreds of individuals, hundreds of contributors to the project. I could, we could do, you know, let's read off the name, a roll call of names, and we'd be here for days, of people in this community who have supported this project, and we can't thank them enough. So now's the time to celebrate. I started off with cupcakes, and I want to end with reminding everyone that this is a victory for our community, and we need to celebrate that victory. We know there's work ahead, but let's take a deep breath, let's take a few minutes, let's pat each other on the back and enjoy this. There's work ahead of us, and I'm sure that if we all put that shoulder to the boulder, we're going to get that next one up the hill as well. So thank you, Stuart, for inviting me. Thank you, Council, for indulging me, and thank you for the staff team who's worked so hard and been so kind to me in my first two months. Thank you all.
Thank you, Barry. We need more presentations like that. They're expensive, but man, they're...
But we're not building an addition. Don't grow too much.
So next up...
I'll be right back there.
There we go, yeah. So next up is the adoption of the consent agenda. These are all items that are considered routine in nature, so the only ones I wanted to call out is we do have a couple of appointments in here. Tony Hughes being applied to the, appointed to the Oskaloosa Public Library Board of Trustees, and then also Pat Sodak, yeah, Pat Sodak, being appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. Do we have a motion of support for the consent agenda?
It's a move. Second.
Okay, discussion.
Thank you for volunteering that. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Getting into the regular agenda. First up is a resolution on the vacation and sale of a 200-foot by 16-foot section of east-west alley. This is adjacent to 806 South M Street. There is a public hearing involved with this. Staff received an alley vacate request from Darrell and Deborah Swope. They're the owners of the property located at 806 South M Street. For the 100-foot by 16-foot east-west alley adjacent to their property, Mr. Swope would like to purchase the land to build a shed and connect his parcel. Subject alley is a residential two zoning district. When reaching out to the property owners, the adjoining owner at 1110 Seventh Avenue West also indicated they would like to purchase the alley adjacent to their property. So staff has extended the request to a 200-foot long segment. Planning and zoning considered the request at their meeting on August 8th of 2023. Recommended approving the alley vacate by a vote of 6-0. Staff conducted a survey of the property owners and utility companies who have direct access to this portion of the alley. Two property owners were surveyed, both of which were not opposed. Utility companies have not indicated that they have any infrastructure in this alley. Do we have them? I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion of support?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B, this is to consider a resolution on the vacation and sale of 8,192 and 1/4 square feet of alley in the vicinity of 210 Second Avenue West. Staff received the alley vacate request from Gridco LLC on behalf of Musco Corporation. They're the owner of the property located at 210 Second Avenue West, and it's for the 256 1/2 by 16 1/2 foot north-south alley and the 256.6 by 16 1/2 foot east-west alley with a total of 8,192 and 1/4 square feet. It's located on the block of 210 Second Avenue West, and they're purchasing the land to construct the new building on the block. Subject alley is commercial zoning district. Planning and zoning considered the request at their meeting on August 8th of 2023. Recommended approving the alley vacate by a vote of 6-0. Residents were not surveyed for this request since Musco owns all of the adjoining properties to the alley. A survey of utility companies identified that there are several utilities in the alley. Those will need to be relocated as part of the overall site plan, but that will be the responsibility of the requester to coordinate. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion of support from council?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Callagury?
Yeah.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Abstain.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Abstain.
Okay, that passes. Item C, this is to consider a resolution on the vacation and sale of 1,090 square feet of street across from 216 Second Avenue West. Staff received a street vacate request from Gridco on behalf of Musco Corporation. The owner of the abutting property located at 200 First Avenue West for a 54 1/2 foot by 20 foot section of street total of 1,090 square feet located across from 216 Second Avenue West. They're purchasing the land to allow for construction of a proposed Musco campus expansion. Planning and zoning commission considered the request at their meeting on August 8th and recommended approving the alley vacate by a vote of 6-0. Residents were not surveyed for this request as Gridco owns the only abutting property to this segment of street, and a survey of utility companies identified no utilities in this segment. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who speaks to this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion of support from council?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Abstain.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Abstain.
Callagury?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to item D, this is to consider a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for weed cutting. So this also involves a public hearing. This is being done under the Code of Iowa Title 8, Chapter 8.20 of the city code of the city of Oskaloosa as well. So in Exhibit A, there are four properties that we have. Certified notices were sent to each property owner. A notice was published in the Oskaloosa Herald, and if approved, the property owner would have 30 days from the time of filing with the Mahaska County Treasurer to pay for the weed cutting in the city clerk's office. After 30 days, it's assessed to their property taxes with a payment schedule at 9% interest. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion of support for the levying of a special assessment?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E, this is to consider a resolution approving a site plan application for the downtown business campus and parking expansion. Sean Christ, I believe you have some words of wisdom for us?
I appreciate the compliment, Mayor. I'll do my best. All right, so this is a project that we've been working on for a couple of months, and it's nice to have Mr. Rogers here this evening to speak to this as well. So if any of you looked at the packets, information that was included, there are a lot of documents, plans, and specifications in there. They're very detailed, and there are dozens and dozens of pages that, you know, that may or may not look familiar to you. So what we tried to do here is to boil this down a little bit into a project and some renderings that gives you, I think, hopefully, a better view of the project as a whole. So this is a view of what I understand will become the main entrance to Musco's campus downtown. This is looking west, northwest at the main entrance, and then some of the properties and improvements that are proposed around it. On the bottom, you can see essentially the equivalent street view of what we have there today. This is a closer view of that main entrance. Propose is a 50,000-square-foot addition to Musco's MDF building. This is the rear of the former Kmart, which was attached to the mall and one of the anchors there at one time. This will be a two-story addition. It will house a new lobby, reception areas, and all sorts of workspace for their employees and public space, training space as well. There's a list of everything included in the communication sheet for this project. Also included with this is about 24,000 square feet remodel of that space as well, and converting much of that into offices. It will show you some of the exterior improvements here in subsequent slides, and then also a similar view on street view to the south. In addition to that is a skywalk, which will go across Second Avenue. It will connect that addition to a two, a two-story, three-floor parking garage. Total square feet, about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, will hold up to four-hundred employee vehicles. And that will be on the south side of Second Avenue and take up essentially the entire block, the block that you just approved for the alley vacates. And then going across Second Avenue to, to the north side, a little bit closer to the mall, this is looking southwest at what they call their greenhouse walkway. They're also adding green space on the north side of that, and everything that you see here today, which is used for Musco employee parking, will be open and available to the public and also available for use for parking to access the mall. This is, just, just to the right of this view would be the Dollar General entrance for reference. And then also a similar street view today. This is at the end of west, of First Avenue West. All right, so this is a view of the south side of the main building. On the right, you can see the two-story planned addition, and then this is the, the additional improvements to that MDF building. They're adding a lot of glass to bring sunlight into that building for the employees and visitors. This is the east wall of the main building and the skywalk. You can see the skywalk leading to the parking garage on the west, and then again, the, the street view today, theater and the facility shop in the foreground. And then this is the west and north elevation of the main building as well. All right, this is an aerial view of the proposed parking garage, taking up the entire block over the existing aerial photo. In addition to the building itself, they're proposing street improvements, new sidewalks, street trees as well. So it, it really, I think, is, is a nice design, and it should fit well into the neighborhood. One of the things that was discussed at planning and zoning is, as, as you know, we have residential homes on the south side of Third Avenue West. All those homes have a front yard setback, and this project, I think, was very well-designed where they're mimicking that setback on the south side of that building. So you have a similar view looking down that street, which is both a residential and a commercial corridor, and actually one of arterial's, arterial streets. And then this is a closer view of, of what will become the guest and visitor parking area. MDF main entrance over here to the left, the, the greenhouse connecting the, the new addition space to the existing headquarters closer to the square. All of this will become, uh, uh, guests and visitor parking. And then this is an overall view, looking at the entire project, the parking garage here on the south side, Second Avenue, streetscaping there as well. You can see the skywalk, and there will be an at-grade pedestrian crosswalk as well. The visitor parking, guest parking area that I was just talking about, the addition here, remodeling in the existing MDF building, and then here where my cursor's pointing is the additional green space and public parking on the, on the top side of that photograph. So this is a, a project that I think, like, as I mentioned, this is very well-designed. I think this will be not only a very nice improvement to our downtown, but it also is respectful to the residential neighborhood that it abuts. It meets or exceeds all city code requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, and staff concurs. Happy to answer any questions.
The entrance into the parking garage, is that on the east and west side?
Yes, great question. That is correct. The entrance and access points will be from the west and also the east, not from the south side. You may have noticed on the plans, there is a driveway on the south side that will only be used for snow removal.
Okay.
And I know Jeff probably mentioned this, but that Second Avenue West would probably be closed for two year, a year or two, that's gonna be, right, no, okay. I know, it's a lot of traffic, okay.
He actually brought along, well, handed out enough, here's, there's a campus view that's a little bit, that, put both of them in. Yeah, there's two things out here. One's a, a little better view of the campus, and then there's a, a one-line diagram that shows where the fence will be when we start construction. Bob, you know what it is.
I've seen it before.
Thank you.
That'll be beautiful though. Now, will that provide a parking spaces where that houses all of the people? Maybe they still do park on the.
He showed you a little bit on that first one of, of overview of what the campus looks like, but.
Can I get you to step back to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. You can, you can, he, he did a pretty good job, did a really good job. There was a couple of slides in there, I mean, you know. The, this, the one that says overall concept gives you just basically a plan view of what the campus is gonna look like when we're all done. And again, we really like the green space on the north side of that connector. A, a big part of our world is the town square. When, when our customers come to visit us, they love the town square. And so we really wanted to add some more green space to not necessarily replicate the square, but to tie it together with, with what we have downtown now. And then this other drawing that we gave you, there's a red line. You can see there, there's the construction fence. It will go around the north side as well as the east-west and south side of the property to secure it during construction and, and the renovation process. That'll probably be, we'll probably have that up the fifth of September, we put up.
So after Labor Day.
And it'll be until Labor Day at twenty-five.
Okay. And then, and then, Jeff, you said this will be a training hub for all of your employees to come into. Would you expect that you'll have more, I mean, are you expecting a little growth in employees or just a training hub for?
I, we expect additional growth employees. I don't want to make any commitment to what that looks like, but, but the commitment I can make is that we're gonna run all of our employees through here for training. Anything else you'd do, Jeff? No, and customers, we bring, we bring hundreds of customers a year through here for additional training, product demonstration, something like that, so that'll continue to happen. And again, that parking thing's gonna be a bit of a hassle for a little while.
Sure.
And gonna be some noise there in October when we're drilling for footings and stuff like that, but again, I think it's, it's over with pretty quick.
That's much needed, that parking is much needed.
I have two questions, actually. So the parking garage?
Mm-hmm.
Is that ever open to the public? Or is it only for employees?
We've yet to get the logistics worked out, but I can say yes, that, I mean, from, from, seven o'clock in the morning on Monday till six o'clock at night on Friday, we want to make it focused on Musco employees.
Right.
But beyond that, yes, I see it being available for.
So when we have events at the square and the parade and all of that and the concerts.
We have yet to figure out the exact policy, but the intent is to make it available for
Yeah, that should be too hard. And then what happens to the movie theater?
Well, we're in full support of, of a transition that allows to go from the existing one to a new venue that they're building out at the, at the hotel without, with as minimal amount of disruption as possible.
But it's gonna be a couple of years.
Uh, I, I don't know.
Good news. But Jeff, speak to the timing of the construction of the parking garage itself.
I just went to see Oppenheimer yesterday, so I'm a bit invested in the movie theater.
The construction timing for the parking garage, though, is actually next year.
Yeah.
And lining, lining that up with the opening of the entertainment venue.
The goal is that we don't start the heavy construction of that until we're done out at the entertainment venue.
Yeah, because people are bragging, we got a better theater than Pella and Atomaw, so.
I think they'll be very pleased with the new version.
Okay, okay, just checking, just checking.
It'd be better, it'd be better than annoying.
Thanks, Jeff.
So it may be, it may be, it's not, it's not what you came here to talk about, but as far as the construction schedule for the entertainment venue, do you have any information on that as to what that timetable was?
Well, the, the intent is that sometime around the end of October of twenty-four, they'll be finished with the, you know, ready to move in, ready to open up. Again, a lot of that depends on winter construction, all that, but that's, you can.
Okay.
That'll be wonderful.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that right, Bob?
So we have before us to consider a resolution approving the site plan, and so after the presentation, we have a motion of support.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Be wonderful, be wonderful.
I just wanted to say thank you for the investment in our community, team members, and, you know, the, the communities that everybody drives from every day as well, so.
Absolutely.
Great to see the future of Oski continue to grow.
Yep.
For many, many years to come. Roll call, please.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Abstain.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Absolutely.
Drost?
Abstain. What happened are you talking about?
Both were bigger. Okay, item F. This is to consider a resolution accepting completion of the three-lane conversion and the traffic signal installation project by Mintern Incorporated and approval of pay application number nine. This is the final payment. It's in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. So Mintern completed the work. Scope of the work included converting segments of A Avenue and Market Street from two-or-four-lane configurations to a three-lane configuration, upgrading the railroad crossing along A Avenue, installing new traffic signal at the intersection of North Market and C Avenue, and upgrades to the other traffic signals throughout the city. Final contract price for the project is nine-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, after a net increase of seventeen-thousand-seventeen dollars and a penny from the original contract price. McClure Engineering reviewed the work, certified the work was completed in accordance with the agreement and is recommending the city accept the project as complete. So with approval, this project would be accepted as complete, and approval of the completion of this project authorizes the release of the remaining contract amount and retainage, which is presented as pay request nine, the twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents mentioned earlier. And it's due to the contract thirty days after contractor, thirty days after the project acceptance, if there are no claims filed against the project. Change order number six for a decrease of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and fifty cents is also included with this item, representing the final quantity adjustments for the work completed. So we've got the breakdown of how those numbers were arrived at. Do we have a motion of support for this final payment?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I've got two questions. A Avenue East, east of Eleventh Street, I know there's cones and there's grinding and all that, is that part of this contract or is that, or is that additional?
Yeah, I had to do a legal turn to get here.
That's unrelated to this project. That's, that's a DOT maintenance project that they have on.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
And second question, just to put it out there, I know the answer. South Market right out here, talking, I think that's on the agenda here, agreeing to work with the DOT. That's a, that, that's a completely separate issue from what we're talking about here.
Yes, this, the, the, accepting is, the, the item that you'd be accepting is accepting that the contractor had correctly converted from the original two-lane configuration to the three-lane configuration it is, at least supposed to be operating as right now. That's created issues that we'll talk about later.
Yep, thank you.
Other comments or questions? You got a motion and, and a second? Roll call, please.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G. Considering a resolution to approve the Iowa DOT proposed temporary configuration along US sixty-three South Market between Second Avenue and Sixth Avenue. So DOT has had ongoing repairs on the pavement edges within the city limits. Previously, it was a two-lane road with a center turning lane added. The request came to be due to pavement deterioration in some areas along the four-plus-block section just south of the business district and failure of the pavement surface in those areas. Condition requires major reconstruction to correct long-term, and so to remedy the situation, the Iowa DOT has proposed to us a two-lane configuration until such time as a reconstruction can be performed, and since it's in the city limits, they're requesting confirmation from the city before acting. They are planning to reform, the DOT is planning to perform the restriping and the short-term pavement repairs as a part of their overall maintenance with no cost to the city. Staff agrees that this is the best solution until the subsurface issues can be corrected. Do we have a motion of support?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any comments, Sean?
Yeah, I, I just would say that this is something that I don't think we could have really foreseen with the information we had without having done some kind of boring tests along the edge of the pavement. Essentially, what's happened is we moved the traffic to the outside of the pavement as opposed to, to closer to the center line, and the outside of the pavement, the, the subsurface was not designed for the traffic level that's on it, so that's been the cause of this. So just getting the traffic back to two-lane, getting it along those sides should temporarily address that until we're able to do.
Are you worried about, sorry, are you worried about turning, whether there just be two lanes? Are we worried about congestion with turning onto third, onto fourth, onto?
No, this is essentially, this, a two-lane is actually the configuration this segment had before we did this, so it's, it's going back to how it was already operating.
Okay.
One of the things that, while, while they're not getting a lot of traffic that was doing this, if people were stuck turning, you could maneuver to the outside around them potentially, so if someone was totally stuck, then that would happen. In addition to that, this is a residential district. It does not have a large quantity of turning traffic.
Chief, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, though, if it's a two-lane road, you can't go around, legally, you can't go around them.
To the right, it's a lot.
To the right.
To the right.
Can you, can you?
It's what else to do with people.
Do it.
Because that's right, so what, what I'm saying is if we're having people turning and Sean's saying, okay, it'll be enough for him to go, that is not legal to do that. Okay. I had someone that got hit doing that. That's the only reason I'm writing between third and fourth, they went around, and then the person decided to turn. This is before it was changed and got hit.
Has the DOT offered any kind of a timeline as to doing this, what we're talking about today, and then also the repairs?
The, the restriping, I, after they do their maintenance that they're working on that was mentioned earlier on the east end of A Avenue, restriping is part of what they're gonna be doing for that. They have, can only restriping they have to do anyway, so.
Pretty quick, man.
So, yeah, that, that would expect to be done by the end of the year. In terms of reconstruction, there's not a set deadline for that. They're, they're currently getting their funding together to figure out what that project would look like. The estimate I heard was that it would probably be a couple of years, because it's just, to, to be blunt, it's not a priority location for them to, to do something more urgent, but it's not a project that was in their plan already, so unfortunately, it will be a, a significant amount of time.
So are they gonna do anything to where the tar is basically coming up in front of people's driveways and stuff? Are they gonna try to fix, do something with that?
Yeah.
So does it look so ugly?
Yeah, they'll need to, they'll need to either grind down the segment and, and resurface it, which is what they had initially tried to do. They actually did try and do that a couple times where they resurfaced it, but they just pushed back out again immediately, so they will need to do that in the short term to, to solve that, or they may do a location patch and just concrete the, the specific areas that are worse. There's a couple different options that they have, but they are planning on doing it once this is.
It'd be kind of a concern when we start getting snow in the ground, state comes down flowing.
And some of those locations are right to park people. Yeah, some of those locations are right to park people's driveways, so they can't really leave it that way.
Right.
Okay. Other comments from council? And if you could hang around after the meeting, if anybody in the audience has any questions to think, to circulate that. So do we have a motion of support on this configuration?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yeah.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H. This is to consider a resolution authorizing advancement of costs for an urban renewal project and certification of expenses incurred by the city for payment using Iowa Code Section four-oh-three-point-nineteen. This will be for a downtown facade improvement project phase four. Man, when you're on a roll. So this item will authorize internal loan for the urban renewal project using fund balance in the general fund. Approval of the item is part of the process to receive reimbursement from future tax increment revenue for the downtown facade improvement project phase four, and in this instance, the architectural design and historical review costs estimated at twenty-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars, and the grant application assistance, which is estimated at three-thousand dollars, associated with the facade project are eligible for reimbursement of urban renewal tax increment revenue as it's included as a project in the adopted urban renewal plan. The process of advancing the funds from the general fund is being used because the debt associated with the project was not included in the current or previous year's TIF asking for the city, and therefore must be drawn from a fund that has a readily available balance. This work will be used for a community development block grant application in fall of two thousand and twenty-three. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution for the, yeah, and so do we have a motion of support?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We're the first community to get three phases of work, let's be the first one to get four.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yeah.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I. This is to consider a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city and Curtis Architecture and Design PC for the downtown facade improvement project. City Council has programmed the funds for that fourth phase. It'll be in the five-hundred-to-six-hundred block of High Avenue West. Work is predicated on receiving another community development block grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority and to apply for the grant. Design concepts and probable costs have to be developed and a historical review completed. So, and requests for qualifications were published on July fifth and due July fourteenth with two submittals received. Curtis Architecture and Design scored the highest, and Curtis has been used previously for the prior three project phases. And so the scope of the services, meeting with stakeholders, completion of a required slum and blight survey, completing historical survey and evaluation, measuring and developing the design drawings for each property, providing opinions of probable costs on each property, and also assisting the city and Area Fifteen RPC in preparing the grant application. So staff is recommending the city council approve the resolution. Do we have a motion of support?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This gets it on the rails. Roll call.
Callagury?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yeah.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item J. This is to consider a resolution approving the contract with Area Fifteen Regional Planning Commission for their application assistance for the downtown facade improvement project phase four. So this work. So, uh, this work to be done is predicated on receiving a CDBG grant, and so it, this item presents a contract with Area 15 RPC to provide the necessary services for the funding. So the scope of this one is the facilitating of discussions between the stakeholders, including if not limited to the city, the Oskaloosa Main Street and Iowa Economic Development Authority, assisting the city and coordinating the participation of building owners, guiding the procurement process for preliminary and final architectural services, assisting the city in arranging all the public hearings that are required to complete and submit the CDBG application, and also completing a HUD environmental review to ensure a more competitive grant proposal. So staff is recommending the city council approve the resolution. Do we have a motion of support?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Just want to say that Area 15 has been a great partner over the last three phases and it's been instrumental to getting this done.
Yep, I know what they're doing. Roll call, please.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes. Item K, this is to consider an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to enact a new zoning code text and map for the city of Oskaloosa and its two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is the second reading after approval at the last meeting. Pursuant to Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 2.56.170, Planning and Zoning Commission prepared an update to the city zoning code. The effort was guided by a consultant and staff under the goals and recommendations of the Plan Oski Comprehensive Plan. Oskaloosa's current zoning ordinance was adopted in 2000, the year 2000, with periodic updates. General goals for the update include modernizing the ordinance, making, making it more consistent with other plans, addressing any gaps, providing flexibility, meeting legal requirements, streamlining the approval processes, and also extending the zoning to the city's two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Since the first reading, a few minor review and commit, comments were received from the leadership and with the active efforts of council member Caliguri, so edits have been made to define how the building envelope and building line. There are age minimums reviewed for what's considered to be a retirement residence for chickens that are on residential property, homey hens will be allowed, I don't know if that was your idea or not, Joe, but.
Just bring me the eggs.
Yeah, thus roosters don't, okay. For landscaping materials, removed a consistency requirement for the Iowa State Native Species List, adding general language regarding appropriateness for conditions and location and not invasive species. So we did have public hearings on July 5th and August 7th. P&amp;Z Commission recommends approval of the second reading. Do we have a motion of support for this?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any further discussion on it? Thank you for the work of, of everyone catching a couple of minor tweaks that needed to get, get adjusted. Roll call, please.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda. I'd like to bring up another one, though, that while it's not on the agenda, it also it's not anything of major importance. We have the, uh, the, the thriving community designation. We were awarded that. One of the obligations that we have under that is to make an appearance at the housing conference, which is going to be held on the same night as the city council meeting. And council members are requested to please make a very strong showing at this conference, and so that reception is at the same time as the council meeting would ordinarily be on, you know, not the first Monday because it's holiday, but the following Tuesday. So I would like to move the two council meetings in September, instead of being the first and third Monday, to being the second and fourth Monday in September, then revert back to our schedule in October. You know, again, it's not something that is, requires any kind of an ordinance or anything like that, but it's just holding the meeting. Do we have a motion of support for that?
So moved.
I thought.
I'll second it, then we can talk. Okay, discussion?
Go ahead, Bob.
I, I was just going to say, do we want to move both September ones or are we just going to move, move the first one?
It's gonna.
Then you have two in a row.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bump into that in the September, October as well. But I think there's enough stuff going on, I want to make sure that we have, you know, I guess it doesn't really matter that much, but my intention was to do the second and fourth.
Does that council member stall?
Comments from staff? Would, you know, I'm throwing that out there.
Can we, can we vote if it's not on the agenda? I think we could.
No, but you can help us vote.
Something like this where it's ministerial relative to that, I'm comfortable doing this.
And so, and so along that same line, doing it for two meetings as opposed to one, it's, it's the same general concept as.
Yeah, once again, I, I'm comfortable with it in as much simply ministerial sort of thing.
But if we had the two together in September, uh, we're still going to have two together if we move them, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
So we'll still have a, a sloping, if you will.
Yeah, yeah, they're, you know, the fourth Monday in, in September, and then it'll be the first Monday in October.
Your honor, let's move one meeting.
Okay.
And keep the second one.
Okay.
Since we still have the back-to-back.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, both of you guys are both okay with, with doing just the one meeting then?
Just the one.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, gets us to the end of the agenda. Items from city staff, city manager, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, city clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, city attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, uh, city council members, um, let's start with you, Steve.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Ronan?
I, I'd just like to jump on Barry's comment. I'm, I'm a member of the Y, I'm there at 5:00 AM, and it is, uh, other than it takes me four and a half minutes longer to get there from my house because I live a lot closer, it's been a joy to go in there. The, uh, the facility is amazing.[1534.11]